All right. February 13, Wilson County Commissioners Court will come to order. Before we begin, we were supposed to have Pastor Eric Laverne. He hasn't shown up, so we're going to have the prayers said by Commissioner Martin.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we just ask you to bless this meeting of Commissioners' Court this morning and guide us and direct us into doing what's best for the citizens of this county. And Father, we know there are many out there that are sick or ill, and Lord, we just lift them up to you for your healing power as you see it according to you. Lord, we thank you for the folks that have come today to participate in this meeting. Bless us all, and let us have a wonderful day in Jesus' name, my brethren.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, our presidency is to be Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, we're going to move to item number three, public comments. I understand we have one citizen that would like to talk.
Do I have to check this up for you to catch it?
No, we don't have to.
Okay. Hi, I'm Karen Timmy. And to you guys, the kind of weird things that your voices wouldn't go here. I understand that we have some firms that are wanting to use Wilson County for solar farms and are coming to, planning on coming to the county for tax abatements. I am not a person who just automatically thinks tax abatements are a bad thing, nor do I think redevelopment is a bad thing. But I think we're going to need, we're in a position right now where we can set up precedence as to how we're going to deal with these things. And I have some suggestions, that's what I mostly hand it out to you, as to what I think we ought to look at. One, there needs to be a contractual provision that makes it impossible to transfer the project or its area to a public entity like CPS, okay? If we don't do that, and a company comes in and they do this, and then they sell to CPS, the county loses all of its tax dollars on that property because CPS doesn't pay taxes, we're a public entity. Secondly, the property owners find themselves under threat of imminent building. So we need to make sure that if we enter into an agreement that we have protected ourselves, both protected the county and protected its citizens. We really ought to restrict their project area and redevelop so that only those properties, where they have a lease or they have these simple ownership of the property. The idea that they put into a project area properties that they don't have any lease to use? Really? Does that not smell bad to anybody? This protects the property owners from bad practices by the entities, okay? We should require a setback, maybe 300 feet, which isn't all that much. That's a city block, by the way, not in the middle of the country. 300 feet really isn't much. With greenside streaming to avoid them overbearing their neighbors, okay? Require that any wells that are drilled on the property be licensed to the hump with Evergreen, which they ought to be anyway, and are used only for servicing the project, not for selling water to some other entity, okay? We don't want to size these things for 1,000 gallons a minute and sell that water to somebody. Then they're pumping way too much out, okay? But also that any used water on the place be reclaimed and treated to TCQ wastewater standards prior to discharge to prevent pollution of the water downstream. Let me give you a couple of examples. One of the ones, one that concerns me the most, you have a list of property owners that take in on that one, is that the one property they have a lease agreement on is at the headwaters of Allen Creek. Allen Creek flows through that portion of the county and eventually flows into the Siblo. We don't really want them leaving the water into Allen Creek. I don't want it to leave into our property. But also, the one that is probably going to come up the soonest has got on it, just a second, I want to make sure I get this right. Okay, there it is. It's got the Wincart Reservoir, Elm Creek, and Chocolate Creek in it, okay? So these are waterways that, you know, we need to be protected. Finally, if access to the property is by county roads, then you only need to charge them substantially enough so that the increase of what they're doing to the roads, they get to pay for, okay? They should be taking down the county roads that they are destroying with their heavy equipment and not get the government to pay for it. Now, of course, if this just comes off of 123 or 97 or 87, that's a state's problem, not a county's. But if it's coming off of the county road. And I suggest that each of these items be considered as part of what needs to go into a contract with any entity that's coming that wants to do a solar panel generation. I don't know if y'all are allowed to ask me questions, but I'd be happy to answer any of the questions.
We are not. We've got to mention for a moment that we have to report all commissioners, correct? I'll move to item number four, certificates and completion of the role. It's going to take a little while, ladies and gentlemen, we have to read these all, so they go on. Okay, first certificate completion would be Commissioner Martin for pipeline emergency response and damage prevention. The equipment attended open meetings, director act, online class. Again, another one for equipment on a level three security awareness certification. Another one for equipment, certificate of completion for county governments, seminar for newly elected judges and commissioners. Commissioner King, Public Information Act. Commissioner King, Open Meetings Act. Commissioner King for the 2023 seminar for newly elected judges and commissioners. Commissioner Aiken, Public Information Act. As well as, if the open meeting. Commissioner Aiken for the 2023 seminar for newly elected judges and commissioners. Same one as Commissioner King, my attended A&amp;M. County Clerk Genevieve Martinez, Public Information Act. County Clerk Genevieve Martinez for introduction and overview, account management, handling the information. Name-based search. Fact clearinghouse. There's a multitude of certificates. I'll read the first one for Ivan Kalunga, the first one was all related to with vehicle titles and registration verification. And Danielle, no his, was that what he said?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Same thing, vehicle titles and registration verification. Doesn't say it's an action item, but it can be a simple one. Somebody would like to make a motion to have these placed here with the records in the county clerk's office. I'll make the motion to replace the certificates that are awarded red by the judge. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Verdola. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Against, I'd have the motion to be carried. Okay, we will go to item number five. Mr. Holcomar, IT Director wants, he's going to provide us with discussion and potential action to enroll all current, future Wilson County boards, elected officials, and appointed officials who use a computer to perform their duties under the approved cybersecurity training course pursuant to Texas Government Code 2054.5191.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. I have a, basically, it's an annual recurring cybersecurity training that's mandatory and it's required for certain grant applications. We have to complete this training in order to apply for certain grants. So I'm just requesting your permission to enroll all the employees who require the training into an approved course, and some employees may already have completed or will complete a course that is qualified. For example, the CGIS training may already qualify, and we may not have to enroll those employees. So, you know, they don't have to take two different trainings. They just need to find out for sure if that, if that course still qualifies this year. And then basically, all the employees who don't have that CGIS training would also need, or another qualified training, would need to take the DIR training that's provided by the state. And then, once that is completed, I just go online and certify it, and that'll be that.
So, Mr. Holcom, how long is this class? I mean, because our managers are going to have to start working around these schedules. So maybe they can figure it out, correct?
Yes, sir. The class is about training, it's usually no longer than 30 minutes, usually about 15 minutes. But also, we have quite a bit of time. I think we have to certify the course in August, so we should have plenty of time to accommodate the schedules.
Well, I think we definitely need to have, I did when I was working with the state, it didn't take that long to do it. I have had that suggest training already, so I'm not sure I need to tell you revision.
If you took the training this year, then you won't need this.
All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion, that's a long one, to have our elected officials, appointed officials, those who have computer abilities, capabilities that they use every day to take this training, which is mandated.
I'll make a motion that we authorize Mr. Holcomar, IT Director, to enroll all personnel that need the training and see that it is completed.
Motion made by Commissioner Verdola, seconded by Commissioner King. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right, we're going to move to action, item number six. Commissioner Aiken addressing the court, might was travel to Austin, or the counties at the Capitol Day. I want to say, Commissioner, thank you for doing that a lot, because we're already, we needed some representation there that day, but everything was full, and I just wanted to give everyone. Appreciate you. Go ahead, sir, that's for it.
Thank you, Judge. I had the privilege to go see a little bit of our state government in action last Tuesday. The TAC, which is our group called the Texas Association of Counties, that helps represent us, help students, inform us, train us, and keep us abreast of items that are going to come back and affect us at the county level. They sponsored this day, and it was great that I could be able to learn a little bit from some of our representatives that were there. And it also provided me opportunity to go speak with Representative Yen and Senator Zaffarian. I was able to visit with Representative Yen for about 20 minutes in his office, and we discussed things such as unfunded mandates that are handed down from the state and given to the counties in which they're directing us to do things, but they don't give us the money to perform what they're directing us to do. Also, the topic was mental health and the way that it affects our sheriff and our county jails. They're aware that there is a backup that is taking place, it is on the state level, to where we are having to hold people in a jail system that don't need to be in a jail system. They need to be receiving treatment from physicians, and this is causing issues with the way we deal with criminals in our county, and it's affecting the rest of the state. The state had plenty of beds, but they couldn't find staffing, and so they took away almost a third of their beds last year to where it backlogs us on what we're able to do here locally, and it cost us a lot of money. I was able to meet with Senator Zaffarian on the Senate floor. She was kind enough to give me some time. She is on five committees and is dealing with constantly being busy to take and serve. She has a bill, Senate Bill 70, in which she's trying to work on taking away unfunded mandates. All of these are things that we need to be aware of because they directly affect us. The TAC wanted to take in and share news that there is a Senate Bill 175 by Milton that would delete what is TAC, okay? It will take away State Bill 167 that was brought into existence back in 1969 that created the TAC. And they go, this is a great concern because they're going to take away the ability for us to have an arm to talk to people that are at the Senate and at the representative level. And they're only doing it for the state funded. These are monies that are paid by the state. They're not doing it to the private entities that go there and try to take and get legislation passed. So it's very one-sided, and it will harm us. And so I encourage the court to look into it further, and I can give you more information.
Yeah, and I was going to ask you, I just read something, I don't know if you all read or even, that was more intentional. Did Senator Huffman just put something out about those that are being held in facilities?
I witnessed Senator Huffman, who is chairing the committee on, let me make sure. I want to say that it was finance, please don't hold me on that. Anyways, Huffman is the chair, and I sat in on a little bit of hearings for Senate Bill 1. And Senate Bill 1 had plenty of healthcare professionals that were there that were going, we need this, we need this. I spent about 45 minutes watching them taking petition that committee on. This will take and give us an avenue to deal with the backlogs that are happening at the local level. It'll give us the avenue to take and serve. I don't know if the court's aware, but there is between $32 billion and $33 billion worth of surplus this year. And that's why so many entities are coming to the top and asking for money because the state finally is saying, we have this. I know that our governor wants to earmark a lot of it to try to give some relief to the property owners in the state of Texas, and so that's one of his key purposes. But this is the time to take and approach our representatives and go, we need help at the local level. We need to be able to take and get things done. And we don't need more unfunded mandates being handed down to us. We need all mandates from the state to be funded or don't ask, or don't tell, actually.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information.
Quite welcome.
All right, we're going to go to item number seven, discuss, take action, your point. Correct, Miss Verdman, and trust your team to the Wilson County Development Review Committee. Pretty much says herself, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Martin. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Seven B, discuss and take action, your point, Scott Aiken to the insurance committee.
I'm motion to appoint Commissioner Aiken to the insurance.
Motion made by Commissioner King.
Seven.
Seconded by Commissioner Verdola. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, call for a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. Item number eight, correct, Scriven permits and development directors. And that's a floor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first item I have to relay is naming of a private lane off of Petronas Street. One and Preasing Four. This is an existing easement that somebody requested an address for. We suggest establishing it as a private road. The letters have been sent out to the current property owners and notified that this is a good item to date. And the recommended name is Texas Santa El Lane, A-T-X.
That's a non-existing line you never heard of before.
It's an existing easement through deed records, but, so it's being used currently. It's just needing to be named for addressing purposes, non-legal addressing.
I'll entertain a motion for eight A, naming of a private lane, Preasing Number Four, Texas Samuel Lane.
I'll make a motion, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner King. Is there any further discussion? If there's none, call for the question. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All against, motion passed. We'll move to eight B.
This is for an extension of County Road 328. I've spoke with Commissioner Verdola on this. Their County Road 328 is currently about 1.2 miles long, and the last .6 mile that people have, some people have addresses on, some don't. There's nobody currently living out there, there's nobody living out there residentially. But there is the potential to, it's being divided up to be given to families, so there's a need to be addressed as well. I did confirm in the deed records that every property along with that .66 extension does reference a public road or a right-of-way or county road in some way. So this is for the extension by .66 of a mile.
It was a county road for many years. I'm not sure how this part of the county is off the records. It's still in existence, it's still unused. But since it's not on record as a road, then it's on the county. So we just need to get back on it. The three properties that you're looking at were part of the Coats or family property, and Mr. and Mrs. Coats are deceased, and they passed it to their children. So they're wanting to pass it on to their children, and they can't get addresses to their homes with a non-able county road. So that's why I'm asking to put it back into the county road system so that it will be a maintained road they can get addresses to their children. They're ready to build homes to get addresses out there. So I'll make a motion that we put that .6 tens of a mile back into the county road system.
Motion made by Commissioner Verdola, is her second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Martin. Is there any other discussion? If there's none, call for the vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passed. We'll move to item eight C, utility permit. And there's three there. Let me name them all. Permit number 708, SSWSC, Preasing One, Whispering Oaks Drive. Permit 709, Preasing Three, Lake Valley Circle. Permit 710, Preasing Four, County Road 314.
I've got a packet for you. All right. So looking at permit, utility permit number 708. It's a proposal to bore under Whispering Oaks Drive. Approximately 1,080 feet south of County Road 326. It's a typical one-inch service line with a two-inch PBC casing.
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve permit number 708 for Southern Springs Water Supply Corporation and Preasing One. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King on permit number 708, Whispering Oaks Drive. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passed.
Utility permit 709 is in Lake Valley Circle. It's also a one-inch service line with a two-inch casing. It's approximately five feet inside the right-of-way to the board.
I'll make a motion that we approve permit number 709 for SS Ward.
Motion made by Commissioner Verdola, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Is there any other discussion? If not, call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, motion passed.
All right. Utility permit 710 is also a proposal to bore with a one-inch line with a two-inch PBC casing under County Road 314. The agenda does say Preasing Four for this bore because the property that will be serviced by the new leader is Preasing Four. However, County Road 314 is maintained by Preasing Three.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Verdola, except permit number 710, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We'll go to item number eight, B, non-standard flat variances. The Cotton Road 189, Preasing Three, Birds, discuss and take action.
All right, this is a non-standard flat request that has been submitted to my office and received a favorable recommendation from the Development Review Committee. The property owner is proposing to divide their 10-acre tract into a 4-acre tract and 6-acre tract. They're wanting to sell the, I'm sorry, the 4-acre tract.
What's the, I've heard y'all discuss this many years. What are the limitations on that?
It's a one-acre minimum with septic and public water, which they do have public water. That was one of the. That was one of the things about this request is the four acres that's going to be sold is going to have a public water meter, which is already existing and in place, and the six acres will have a well, which is already existing and in place. They did receive all the approval from the utility companies, and they met all the requirements.
I'll make a motion that we accept the non-standard flat variance on Cotton Road 189, precinct four.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner King. Is there any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Okay, we're going to move to item eight, E. Subdivision, Estates of Triple R Ranch Unit One. Discuss, take action on release of letter of credit, $321,560.
The subdivision, Estates of Triple R, Unit One, has met, or the roads have been reviewed by the commissioner and the county engineer. They have met spec, and it is time to release their letter of credit. They're at that two-year mark for the warranty period of the roads.
Make a motion that we release the letter of credit on Estates of Triple R Ranch Unit One.
Motion made by Commissioners Aikens. Seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Is there any other discussion? None, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. We'll move to item eight, F. Subdivision, Tierra Robles, Unit Three, Lot 155, re-plant. Discuss and take action on getting public hearing for the revised plant application.
So my office has received an application to revise the Tierra Robles, Unit Three, flat. For revised flat, they have to have, provide public notice, which they provided in the newspaper. And the flat will come to Commissioner's Court on the 27th. So I recommend the February 27th at 10 a.m. for the public hearing.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for the Tierra Robles re-plant on February 27th at 10 a.m.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Is there any other discussion? No discussion, call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. And we're going to move to item number nine. County Clerk Genevieve Monapias discussing, take action on Commissioner's Court meetings for the month of January. Your advocate, Ron.
Yes, and they have been reviewed by the county judge and the county attorney's office.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdola.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Martin to accept the minutes of January, month of January. Any discussion? If there's none, call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. We're going to move to item number 10. Jayland Bofford Human Resource Specialist, presentation of payroll and personnel changes.
Good morning. So we have Yvonne Kalenda that was hired as a tax customer service specialist for the tax office effective January 30th, making $16.42 per hour of $34,116 annually. Daniel Compost was hired as a patrol deputy for the Sheriff's Department effective January 30th, making $22.60 per hour of $49,358.40 annually. And Gilbert Elston was hired as a road hand for precinct one, effective February 6th, making $18.50 per hour of $38,480 annually. For resignations, Kristen Richardson resigned from her position as a chief deputy for the tax office effective February 2nd. And retirements, Edwin Baker has retired from his position as a fire marshal and emergency management coordinator, effective February 10th.
Thank you. And we're going to move to item number 11. Brenda Corvino, County Attorney.
Item one is for the county bills. I have reviewed and approved them. The total to be paid is $2,235,751.23. Of that is a payment for, out of the American Rescue Plan, for the 50% of the LCR radio contract. So everything else equates to about $400,000. And you'll see that invoice on page six. It's 1.9 for the radio system, and then the $70,319 for RBK, which is the architectural firm that we hired for the plans for the EOC building. So that is their payment to, for $70,000.
Make a motion to approve the bills.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Perdola to accept the bills. Any further discussion? If there's none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Item number 11.
Yes, so there is no financial report due at this court, Judge, so I'll go on to C.
Yes, ratify the submission of the mowing land applications to the officer of the governor.
Yes, sir. So February 9th was the due date. My office submitted three grant applications. I'll go ahead and call all three. Grant 301, 5408, fiscal year '24, Violence Against Women, Justice and Training, which is the BAWA grant, in the amount of $114,663.89. Grant number two, 330, 9906, fiscal year '24, Victims Assistance Direct Service, Voca grant, $70,014.65. And grant number 483, 0201, fiscal year '24, Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant, for $52,970.40. The first two grants are continuation grants. We currently have those programs for our county attorney's office. One for our victim service coordinator, and the other, the other one, the first one for 114 covers a partial salary of our prosecutor and our investigator in the county attorney's office. The county currently pays, the cost here is 30% for the county. Last year, funding was decreased, so we were awarded $75,000 last year, and the county attorney's budget picks up the rest. We went ahead and asked for the full amount this year. Chances are, we'll still get the 75 because it's in that continuation. But Mr. Caldwell is aware that his office will have to pick up the difference. For grant number two is our victim service coordinator, which is Christina Macias, who works with our victim services group downstairs. That grant is funded at 100%. And then the third one is a new one that we applied for the Sheriff's Department for rifle-resistant vest. And that one also covers 100%. And so we asked for $52,970.40. I'm asking for ratification because these were due last week, and obviously, reported today. So we won't get notification of award until mid-April is the scoring of these. And then from the office of the governor, we'll hear, we probably won't hear until August timeframe.
Oh, we have a sheriff. Sheriff, was that the only thing on that list that you found that you needed to have?
There was other things on that list, but without having something in place, what I would need, I don't have what I need to get the, it would have been nice. You already have it in place, you can't really put it in place off of what you need.
Yeah, so for example, Judge, and I'm glad you said that. One of them was like an anti-gaming funds for an anti-gaming program. Well, like the sheriff said, we can't really apply for that because we don't have an anti-gaming program in place yet. So with some time, I think, and planning, we would be able to apply for those. And those come out every year.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to ratify the submission of the following grant applications to the officer of the governor. Number one, Grant 301, 5408, fiscal year '24, Violence Against Women, Justice and Training, for $114,663.89. Number two, Grant 3309, 906, fiscal year '24, Victims Assistance Direct Service, Voca, And number three, Grant 4830201, fiscal year '24, Rifle-Resistant Body Armor, for $52,970.40.
I'll make a motion to grant 503, which the judge just referenced.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Martin. Is there any other discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. Okay, before I adjourn, I want to remind everybody we're on a new timetable to get your agenda items in. It's Wednesday by noon, and that has to be Ms. Martinez's office by noon. So get them a little early. They come through you all, or they come through me, but we need to get them in there a little quick. Just make sure we're on that timeline. I know we were on a Thursday, but our agendas are getting bigger, and I'm afraid the one that's been in the month is going to be pretty big. We're going to have some other stuff coming on. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, second. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against. The time is 9:44, we are adjourned. Thank you.